It is six o'clock. If you would, please rise. Pastor Steve Adair, please come forward. If you'll lead us in our public head.
Let's pray. Our God in heaven, we come before you tonight. We, as your people and you are God, humbled by the opportunity to speak into your presence here in this place and encouraged by our hope that is found in Jesus Christ. I lift up to you tonight, each one of these members of council before me and each one of these citizens behind me, asking that you would guide their thoughts, their words, and their actions tonight. I pray that your will would be accomplished in this place as those that you have called to serve this community act on those responsibilities. I lift up to you, all of those who serve our city in less recognizable roles, from public utility works to emergency responders and everyone in between, and I thank you for them and their service, asking that you would bless each of them and their families with protection and abundance of life. And God, I bring this city before you in the name of Jesus, asking that your presence would be evident here as we together seek to make our community a better place to live. And I thank you for love and grace and mercy. And I pray that we, as a community, would seek to be more like you in all that we do. Most of all, I thank you for Jesus, who was our hope and our life, and it is in his name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Councilmember Hamilton will lead us in our pledges.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge is to be Texas, one state, one government, one and indivisible.
You may continue. Okay, we do not have any proclamations or words or presentations, so we will move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move to other council actions. Open a public hearing to consider the approval of request by U-Haul owner Jonathan Martindale, Mr. Brennly.
Please, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The council approved this request on first reading back on February the 13th of this year. In order to more thoroughly inform the adjacent property owners of this request and obtain an expanded range of response, the area notification was increased and the city mailed out 79 notices. We had 13 protests and three approvals related to this request. The property involved in the request is zoned planned development like commercial. It is limited to its present use and is currently occupied by a single-story mini warehouse self-storage facility. There are 524 total storage units on the site at this time. Land use in the area does consist of single-family residential development and office development. There's also a church in the area to the south, a drill site in vacant land. The applicant in the case is U-Haul. They do own the property. And the purpose of the request would amend an approved site plan of a 5160 square feet locker storage warehouse facility that contains 119 units by 310% to a 16,624 square feet locker storage warehouse unit. And this would contain 285 units. The warehouse would be 96 by 176 and would range in height from about 28 to 30 feet. The proposed amendment would increase the overall storage capacity on the property to 809 total locker units. The area of this request is located in the eastern section of the city's future land use map. This area is a prime location for low-density residential with a limited retail development in support. Commercial-related developments are a more intensive unit, or use, I'm sorry, and are compatible with residential development only with the use of screening and buffering techniques. And this would mitigate any noise and light impacts on surrounding properties. The planning staff has concerns that the proposed future use would have a significant impact on the city's priority for high-quality lives for its residents in this area. The design of the facility is more industrial in appearance. The amended site plan as proposed for the site is not consistent with the city's priority for safe roadways that are context-sensitive due to the increased size of the development, the size of the structure, the increase in units, and the increase in the amount of traffic that be generated on an already busy road. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve the request with the following conditions: That the proposed structure and site would meet the adopted design guidelines that are established by the city's comprehensive plan. Seventeen additional parking spaces would be required on the property. Any signs related to the development would be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Relocate an existing sign out of a utility easement. Trash collection sites would be shown on the site plan. RV parking and a return truck stacking area is currently shown being located in the utility and drainage easement. This would need to be relocated and worked out prior to any additional development on the property. Site rating plan to address drainage needs would need to be provided to public works prior to any additional development on the property. And 50% of the proposed building, the facade of this building that faces Billy Hacks would need to be of a masonry composition and also adoption of the amended site plan. And be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from Mr. Brennly?
I have a couple. Mr. Brennly, in regards to one of the statements that you made that was part of the P&amp;Z was that "The planning staff has concerns that the proposed future use will have a significant impact on the city's priority for high-quality lives for its residents in that area." It was also pointed out that the site is not consistent with the city's priority for safe roadways that are context-sensitive due to the increased size of the structure, increase in units, and increased amount of traffic. You went on to, or it was also pointed out within the information that the amended site plan as proposed and its anticipated thoroughfare was coming down Billy Hacks would be approximately another 420 average daily trips.
That was stated at P&amp;Z, and I thought that was way out of line, so we did an additional study and had the city's traffic engineer do a traffic count or anticipated traffic count. And what that comes out to is not that much traffic. For a 12-hour, typical 12-hour day, it would be approximately about 168 additional trips.
About 168 cars up and down the street.
Yes, sir. And the other, you can find traffic counts for just about anything you want to, and that one came out of...
Sure, it came out of someplace in California.
Yes, sir, it was.
You know, again, the only other things that are the things that I really have a concern on is it does not meet the city's long-term plan. In regards, it mentioned that in our plan that we had required 70% of the building facade be in masonry, but we're only requiring 50. I do understand that there is an awful lot of things that were put in by the P&amp;Z to make this thing right. My concern is, is how do we know it's going to be made right?
Yes, sir. A lot of that will have to be done during the permitting process, and it would be part of the permit that's reviewed by staff and permit not be approved for development of the property unless those conditions are met. So it would be part of the overall permitting process for this.
Those 10 or 11, 12, such things that have to be in place?
Yes, sir. And before any type of certificate of occupancy after completion is done, these conditions would have to be a part of that permit, yes, sir. And staff would ensure that they are done through review of the permit and plans submitted.
Okay. Other questions from council?
Yeah. You said that the Planning and Zoning Committee approved this, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Then either we go with them or we say the Planning and Zoning Committee does not know what they're doing. I don't know which it is. I guess, I think... I can't remember where you're in. You're on the Planning and Zoning Committee. Maybe you could come up and answer a few questions.
I think we'll just, any question, any other questions for council?
Well, my question would be, why did we allow 50% instead of 70% that's required? Why did we make that exception?
It was during the process of the meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission, there was negotiating back and forth, and it came out to...
If 70% is what's been required, I don't...
Yeah, that's...
I don't understand why we would allow... I mean, if that's the rule that's set up, why aren't we allowed to not do that?
Well, that's, the Planning and Zoning Commission is, per their prerogative, settled on the 50% right then.
Now, we can... Have we had any issues at this place now?
Well, there were some, but they've been mitigated at the time, at this time, yes, sir. And the main issue had been excessive trucks being parked out front.
Well, that still goes on because I drive by there a lot of times. So that problem is going to exist irregardless because they've already shown that they're not going to take care of that problem. That was a concern when we let this deal go the first time when we built it out there. Oh, no, you'll never see a truck parked out there. And you go by there every day and they're lined up out there. And so we already know that that's, that we're not, we're not going to do what we're supposed to do.
Yes, sir.
And I just don't understand why we would allow, oh, we're going to make an exception. Nobody else gets this exception. Anybody else that does that, they got to follow the, they got to follow the 70% rule. But for some reason, we don't have to do that on this one. I would like to know why they don't.
Well, if you want, we can either climb it or table it and bring the chair up P&amp;Z.
I would like, we've got a P&amp;Z member right there. I would like for him to come up and he can answer the questions that we ask.
Do you mind coming up and talking about the P&amp;Z?
What a unique opportunity. Thank you, council. I can't speak very much to this. This particular item has been on the agenda of P&amp;Z for a long time. And we saw it before I got taken off of P&amp;Z, and I don't know what's transpired since then. Frankly, this thing's changed so much from the beginning. There was a lot of conversation about how it looked from the street and where the parking was going to be and signage and hayages and blocking, you know, traffic, everything. And I don't remember, to be honest with you, exactly what took spot. Of course, a lot of that happened when I wasn't even on P&amp;Z.
Now, this is just recent.
Huh?
This is just recent. So why did y'all go to the P&amp;Z?
Well, this is a change. I can't tell you that. I don't even remember if I voted for it against it because it's been some time ago, but I can't help you on that. Mr. Brennly will have to explain it to you or maybe get Hal to talk about it.
Mr. Brennly, isn't this inside the city limit?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so once we pass that truck ordinance, is that going to take care of the truck problem?
No, sir. These are not...
They're not U-Hauls.
Yeah, these are just domestic hog U-Haul trucks. They're not...
We would ask them not to park their own trucks in their...
Well, it's part of a planned development that you can put additional requirements on the property. And to minimize any type of impact of residential development across the street, we limited the number of trucks that could be parked at any one time out front to four, and we monitored that where on several occasions, there's been more than that out there, and we'd had to ask them to move them back.
Is the owner here from that place?
There is a representative here for the owner, but I don't think Mr. Martindale is here.
Is he here? We'll go ahead and open this part of the public hearing, so come on.
I just have a couple of questions. Do you work for U-Haul or...?
No. Kyle Newton with OCA, 521 North Texas Avenue.
Okay. Is this something that we can address with the owner, making sure that we go up to 70% on their building and the requirements and make sure that the trucks are taken care of? Is that something that you can address or is that something we'd have to talk to the owner?
I've had some conversations with our client regarding, you know, you mentioned the 70% criteria, and we had that conversation at P&amp;Z, and it was negotiated that 50% would be acceptable. And our client had revised their elevations to show the 50% to meet that requirement. Now, I have talked to him, and I believe he would be willing to have some more discussion on that if that is what it would take. He's, the client's been trying to address any concerns that y'all may have. We've addressed many of the issues that are the criteria that were outlined in the P&amp;Z comments as far as site plans and some of those elements. We've already addressed those. At first, it was proposed to have a three-story building. We bumped that down to two. So we're trying to be accommodating and work with the city to get this project going. So I believe if necessary, we could be able to revisit that.
You have another question, councilmember?
No, I mean, I just wish he was here so he could, you know, I guess, confirm that this would be taken care of. Because if I'm understanding, this is the second and final approval. And I mean, if we vote aye for this, then we can move forward. Because the problem I have with this, or the concern I have is what's wrong with the U-Haul being there? I mean, we have U-Hauls. We have one on Andrews Highway. We have one on University and Kermit Highway. And why is it okay for those to be there and not okay to be over here? You know, so I think that it's okay for it to be there. You know, you're going to get some pros and cons with everything, but I don't have no other questions, but I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay.
I would agree with you about, I don't have a problem with the location of it. I do have a problem with the fact that we have rules and regulations that we have passed. And if it says 70%, I don't care what your boss or owner wants. If it says 70%, then it's 70%. And I... When did, when did P&amp;Z last vote on this? When did they last discuss this?
Back in August.
In August.
August of last year.
Okay.
And it came before the council in August of last year, and it was first tabled at that time.
Just a question, Larry. Do we table this or are we declining? Can they bring it back up?
Yes.
It's all both.
I'd just like to make one point. The requirements listed are very, very strict. I mean, there's no question. I mean, when you open up with that it's got to meet design guidelines established by the City of Odessa Comprehensive Plan, that's pretty one of those, I guess, the legal terms covers it all type deal. I had a problem with it before. I still have a problem with it, but I do understand what the P&amp;Z did, what they did, but I'll go forward with that.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so is there anybody else that would like to comment on this?
I just have another question. What assurance could you give this council that all of those problems that you saw will be corrected before they're allowed to do anything else?
The assurance that I can give you is a permit will not be issued to begin construction until those problems are corrected.
So all of this, you said, you meant?
Yes, without a permit, they can't do any type of construction. That's contingent upon a permit being issued, those problems being corrected.
Did you see any other problems in there that were not covered?
No, ma'am, not really. We were very...
Were there any allowances made that went outside of the rules that were established?
As far as a special treatment or, no, sir, there wasn't. It was, we were actually fairly strict on this development coming in, mainly because of the residential property right across the street. We're minimizing any type of impact on that with the anticipation of this development.
Look what you don't have on Andrews Highway and Kermit Highway.
That's the main difference right there is on Andrews Highway and Kermit Highway, there's not residential right across the street.
One of the problems we've had with U-Haul is they don't keep their lots up no matter where they are. We've seen it on Maintland Tanglewood. We've seen it on Andrews Highway. The properties aren't maintained, and that's always been a question we had when we first put this in was, is this going to be maintained? And you have said that you've had to go out there and say, you get four trucks, I'm having more than four trucks.
Yes, sir.
That's what concerns. But any other questions for our other public?
I had one other thing that, I just caught one of the things that you said that may have been the reason for the 70% to 50% was the elevation. So the concrete may have taken up more than the masonry from that point on. May have been the agreement from that standpoint. That makes sense. Okay.
Comment for a question. Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so anyone else who would like to comment on this is welcome to come forward.
It's kind of convenient down here.
Across the street, yeah.
So my name is Stephen Adair, the lead pastor of Grace Christian Fellowship, which is on the map is SF-3. Plot A is our current facility. We own all of the property behind us through the three alleys. I guess I can pull my proxy because I'm here tonight, but I agreed to this, and here's why. The property that they're looking to develop right now is basically abused by all of the hot-shot drivers that come up and down Billy Hacks Road. They use our parking lot as a turnaround. They use this field currently as a free lot for their trucks to camp out overnight. City has enough priorities that they don't designate officers to go out there and ask them to leave. There's larger fish to be fried. But it is a nuisance, and their traffic, as it is, probably already exceeds what this U-Haul facility will bring. From the residential perspective, we have a lot of members that live in a little horseshoe right there next to our property. Every morning, they wake up and stare at a wrought iron fence, which is the current wrought iron fence of the facility. The facade that was presented to us in the packet that was mailed out, in my opinion, was much more attractive than the fence that they look at every day. It's a field that has to be mowed. We deal with it behind our property. If it's developed, that nuisance goes away. So I think there's a lot of perks to this. From the truck perspective, for you guys, they're in and out. I mean, they're constantly being moved. If that's a concern, I get it. But also, you're looking at a residential space that whenever we moved into three years ago, I had to drive nine miles to drop the U-Haul off because there wasn't one off of Stone Gate, which is where we moved to. So I think you have a need within the community that this could help fulfill. And people like their stuff, and storage buildings are in demand. So that's all I got for you.
Is there any more?
All I know is that he's got a gun on his side, so I don't know.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 It's three. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote is three to, and it passes. Next, we'll open the public hearing to consider the approval of the request by D.R. Horton, Mr. Brennly.
Yes, sir. The property involved in this request is located northeast of the intersection of Kate Reed Drive and proposed extension of P-Bar Ranch Road. This site is currently designated future development. It is vacant. And land use in the general area does consist of vacant land. The applicant and property owner in this case is D.R. Horton, and the purpose of this original zoning request would facilitate the development of 655 single-family residential lots. These lots would have an average size of possibly 7,500 square feet. Also included in this development would be a neighborhood amenity center. This would include play facilities, recreational facilities, things of this nature for the neighborhood, and two surface drainage basins. Site plan approval to establish development standards for the project would be required prior to development of this property. And this area is located in the northeastern area of the city's future land use map. This area is generally considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed land use for this area is consistent with the identified city priority of vibrant new neighborhoods and a diverse range of housing. And the zoning request for this site and the proposed development design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways and with the intended land use taken, context taken into consideration. Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and the planning staff does compare with this recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Brennly?
Yes, sir. You said amenities. Is that a city park we're talking about or is this private?
No, sir. It's a private park that D.R. Horton does develop with their neighborhoods, and they do maintain that through a homeowners association.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brennly.
Anything else? Okay, this time, we'll open up the floor for any public comment on this. If you're, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Here we have a motion.
So moved.
Yeah, a second?
Second.
And motion and second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll go to ordinance. Consider calling the ordinance for special election on November 6, 2018, to amend the city of Odessa charter to establish one at large member to the city council and to entitle the mayor to vote on all measures considered by the council. We do have two citizens who would like to speak. David Butan. You have three minutes, Mr. Butan.
David Butan, 16 Emerald Gardens Drive. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm speaking in favor of the ordinance. I would support the expansion of the council. I think it's, would be a good thing related to the growth of our community. So I think more voices would be good for the community. And I think it's very appropriate for the citizens to decide this issue. To Councilman Hamilton, the last time I was here, you challenged me and other volunteers to stand before you, look you in the eye, raise your hand, and swear that our efforts, efforts I know for me, to benefit this community are for the benefit of the community and not for me solely. I'm swearing to you that what I've done for the last 40 years and what I've done recently are for the benefit of this community. I will, I hope, to benefit personally from those actions. I hope that my family benefits. I hope my friends benefit. I hope that my fellow employees benefit. I hope business owners benefit. I hope our labor force benefits. I hope the entire region benefits. And I think that if we have volunteers who work unselfishly for the benefit of this community, to their best effort, if we continue to have those folks here doing the things that we do, trying to make this community better, that we will all benefit from that. And you challenged me and other volunteers to stand before you and do this, and you said you wouldn't believe us. I'm telling you that I do this for the benefit of the community and not just for me. Thank you.
Mr. Butan, I have a couple of questions for you.
Actually, let me speak, if you don't mind.
Oh, good.
Thank you. I don't recall challenging you and all this other stuff. I really don't. I think what I said in the past was, I feel like there's a little bit of self-interest here. Obviously, a single-member district has worked all these years. Now, all of a sudden, when decisions have been made that some people or a group of people do not agree with, all of a sudden, there wants to be this change. I don't quite understand that. If it's good for the goose, then it's good for the gander. So it's been working all this time. Now, we were elected basically to vote based upon what we felt was right for the city of Odessa. And for clarification, I think everyone thinks that, you know, we're against it. Let me speak for myself, sir. I'm against any type of development, new development. Totally wrong. I'm for... I'm for new development, but I question at the expense of whom? Everyone here pays tax dollars. I think we were just speaking about taxes back there. Mike said something about he was a taxpayer. So, they should, they being all taxpayers, should see some type of return on their investment. However, many members in my district, I'm just speaking about my district, many members in my district have stated that we're paying taxes, there's inflation here, and you guys have gone up on property taxes, which I wasn't for, I was not here, I wasn't present, so I didn't get to vote on that, but I would have voted against it. But you guys are going against, you guys are increasing property taxes, but what do we have to show for it? There's nothing here, there's no development here. There's no development within the community, you know? We're not talking about downtown, because people cannot live downtown as of now. We're talking about within the community of District One. They're saying, listen, what do we have to show for you guys increasing our taxes? And when I speak about people, I'm speaking about homeowners, because there are homeowners there, the elderly and things like that who are retired, who are now about to be faced with even more problems due to inflation and this boom coming back. These people have to make a decision every day. These people have medications, they have food, food costs, and everything else is going up. Those are the people I'm concerned about. So, when I say that, when I voted, I voted with my conscience. As far as the wear project is concerned, I just felt like it just didn't benefit every entity in Odessa that it should benefit.
Okay. We'll just move to the election.
May I respond?
I understand, this is within, this is within the election, but this is kind of segue into that, so.
Can you respond briefly?
Also, I wasn't, if you don't mind, so, I'll just wrap it up. Basically, I understand that you guys want this election, but I feel like this, there's a little bit of, some things that I don't, I don't see why this election all of a sudden needs to be called now. I just really don't.
Okay, two quick points. One is, I think seven heads are going to be better than five. Simple as that. Second point, from an economic development standpoint, in our community, our efforts have always been to accomplish two things. First, the creation of jobs, and second, the expansion of the tax base. Both of those have happened. If you can look historically, the Odessa Development Corporation has those, that information, and we have accomplished those. There's been a, I don't know how many millions of dollars in capital investments that's been made, and I don't know how many jobs there are, but it's not insignificant, and that's the point, is trying to create jobs, expand the tax base.
And I agree with Mr. Buttan, but at whose expense?
Well, I don't think there's any, when you create jobs, it gives everybody opportunity for those jobs. When you expand the tax base, then it spreads that tax burden amongst more than just the current property owners. So, it benefits everybody.
We're speaking about the incentivization, basically, incentivizing certain, certain businesses and companies and things like that. People want to see a return on their investment, and that's what the people in my district are saying.
Yeah.
They want to see a return on their investment.
And I think that's happened, but, you know, our risk.
Councilmember Hen?
Mr. Buttan.
Councilmember Davis.
Mr. Gomez.
It's been a long day.
I would call worse anyway. I just want to have a conversation. This is not negative, this is not pushback, you know, it is what it is, you know? The ordinance is, it's going to be put on the ballot. It is. And I've reached out to people, and some people have returned my calls, some people haven't. And I'm in total agreement that the city has grown. We have needs that we have to address, and I'm in total agreement that more heads up here are better than just five. It is a lot of responsibility. I mean, this position has humbled me because any decision that we make affects, you know, everybody inside the city of Odessa. But nobody still has been able to explain to me why the at-large is better than the single-member districts, other than it's opinion-based, which there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, you have a, I have a right to say, no, I want single-member districts, and I can fight for it, and whomever's for the at-large, you know, they can do the same thing, but I just feel like, you know, it's not for the right reasons. I think the changes need to be made. Would you be opposed to having on the ballot another option for the community to vote on other than just the at-large? Because one of the takeaways, and I'm glad Larry's here, so he can, maybe he can correct me on this, is that with the mayor voting, he's no longer going to be able to meet with each one of us. He's only going to be able to talk to one more council member, and then that's it. And he's not going to be able to influence, he's not going to be able to dictate. I think his leadership is the one that we look for in those kind of meetings, to see what's coming up and what do we need to do and how we're going to vote on it. So, I'm really concerned about that. And I have a right, as a citizen and as a city councilman, that that could be something that we need to worry about. So, I mean, so I'll wrap up my question here. Can you answer that or can we talk about that? Because.
I'll be happy to talk to you about it anytime, anywhere. Doesn't make any difference. My position is, I think if you have an at-large and the mayor voting, now you have two members of the council to represent the entire community, the entire community, and then you have the member district council, members, members who represent individual districts who can, who can look to those districts. I think it's a great blend. It's my opinion.
Okay. So, the would not, could two more single-member districts and the mayor still breaking a tie if there's ever one, take care of that also?
I like, I like the two, the two at-large because, again, I think you have two positions on the council that represent the entire community.
Would you say that this, again, we're just having a conversation, there's no pushback or anything. I'm learning this with everybody else in this room also, you know? So, again, it comes down to your opinion versus the people that don't want the at-large, right?
And the citizens will vote?
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Yes or no? Yeah. Which is a great way to do it.
I'd take you up on that offer.
Anytime. Thank you, Mr. Hen. Next one is Drew Crutcher.
Drew, I can't read your address, you're going to have to.
I don't know why I can't read my, my, ten Amethyst Cove, Odessa, Texas. Thank you for hearing me this evening. I'm a little bit tired this evening. I'm tired of hearing anyone in favor of this issue, either has some personal gain, in fact, even to the point of being a crook or having some criminal interest in it, or being a racist. I don't have any of those motives, and everybody that I talked to didn't have them either. Simply, I think Odessa's grown, as David was talking about. It needs more representation from all of its citizens and not just in one district. Somebody that looks out for the whole community and has a broader perspective. And I guess I'm just curious, why can't you just accept other people's opinions of this issue? As you just said, well, Malcolm, we're going to let it be heard and vote, and I haven't questioned your motives, and so let's just let the people vote as soon as possible to seat more representatives for the entire city. Thank you.
Mr. Crutcher?
You said the whole community is if, you don't believe that we're looking out for the whole community. I take offense to that. I grew up here in Odessa. I love, I love my city very much, sir.
That's one more thing that I didn't really say, Malcolm. What I was talking about was that you are elected to represent primarily District One. I know you have some interest in the entire city, but you're not at-large and you're not voted on at-large, you're voting for the people in your precinct. My motive was to have more people that respond to the entire community. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not understanding.
Well, you're in District One, Malcolm, are you?
Yes, absolutely.
Your voters are in District One, right?
But I also have to take into account the whole entire city as well, sir.
Well, I'm saying that you don't on occasion do that, but I'm saying that you're allegiance to those citizens in District One, that's who voted you in.
All right, thank you, sir. I agree to disagree. How about we actually set aside some time and maybe we can talk personally?
That'd be good. I would.
I appreciate it.
Okay. I will entertain the motion.
I'm going to be approved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of November sixth, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the vote is four to one. Next, we go to miscellaneous. Ms. Ramaldo, if you, I know we, Louie Warner is going to be voted on from Mr. Hamilton's. And we need to discuss who is, okay, let's go ahead and vote on Louie. All in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry.
Yes, make a motion. I do make a motion, sir.
Say it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now, we need to discuss the Building Board of Appeals.
I make a motion that we accept Mr. Edwin Carl Veroni.
Motion for second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have no more cards, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.